Imeina Trenca Sincana de Jesus Torre Guahan is back from recess. Before the recess, we were discussing Bill Number 86-35, and Senator Telotidegui, you had the floor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and thank you, Madam Speaker, for the opportunity to discuss this further while recess. And I'd like at this time, Madam Speaker, to just yield my time to the good senator from... Yeah, from Nimitzil. Thank you, Madam.
Sidois Masi, Senator Taidegui. Senator Kelly Marsh Titino, you are recognized.
Sainama Asim, Madam Chair. Speaker, I have an amendment to proffer, and then later I have a statement and other amendments. But for this one, it should have been passed out to everybody. It's on line nine, page eight.
Thank you, Senator Marsh Titino. Can you please state if this is an amendment to the amendment? Because we are still on Speaker Tina Munya Barnes's amendment, original amendment.
Yes, Sainama Asim, for making sure that we clarified that. This is an amendment to the amendment.
Sidois Masi.
Yes. So my amendment would be to add on some language, to add on a sentence that says such... Excuse me, "Such sign shall not..." And instead of radiate, as I passed out, I'd like to place in illuminate or shed light onto the beach or ocean. As we mentioned before, that's really an important consideration here, making sure that that light does not illuminate or to shine onto the beach or the ocean so that it is not endangering, confusing, or otherwise adversely affecting marine life of any sort.
All right, Sidois Masi, Senator Marsh Titino, I'd like to reiterate the amendment to the amendment, and that is to read, "A sign authorized under this section shall only be placed on any building wall along Poli San Vatoris Road or Gun Beach Road that faces the road. Such sign shall not illuminate or shed light onto the beach or ocean." Anyone wishing to discuss the amendment? Speaker Tina Munya Barnes, you are recognized.
Sidois Masi, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, in our efforts of continuing to work together, I want to thank the good author of this added amendment to the main amendment to show the collaboration and that I understand that we just want to make sure that those lights do not illuminate into our ocean. So I support the amendment.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Anyone else wishing to discuss the amendment to the amendment? Senator Therese Terlahey, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Again, I support the intent of this amendment, and I appreciate the language about radiating or shedding light onto the beach or the ocean. That is more specific. But I'm still thinking that it's too vague when we say that "a sign authorized under this section," meaning this law really, "shall only be placed on any building wall along these roads that face the road." I'm thinking if I had a building along that road, I mean, for example, if we remove the word "wall," that these signs shall only be placed on any building along these roads facing the road, right? Otherwise, I'm not sure whether we mean they can only place them on walls facing the road if you're in those buildings along the road, but every other building in the hotel zone gets to place it on any wall that they want, including walls facing traffic versus... You know, I don't know. You've got a, you know, two sides of... Three sides of a building potentially facing the road, right? You've got the oncoming traffic. You've got the right in front of the building road, and you've got the... You know what I'm just trying to show is so... I just think it's vague, the way we're describing this wall in relation to the road. And I'm not sure if it's even that important to do that. If we are trying to do what's stated in the last sentence, which is to prevent the light onto the beach or the ocean, maybe can we just say for subsection seven that "a sign authorized under this section shall not radiate or shed light onto the beach or ocean." Or unless we're trying to, you know, limit the wall space, then I can see that, and I support that. But I think it still just sounds vague to me. What happens to all the other buildings that are not along the road? I guess that's my question. So if you're not directly on San Vatoris Road, you're not a building wall along San Vatoris Road, you're the, you know, the building right behind that, still along the beach. Are you restricted or are you not? And I think we want this light shining onto the ocean to restrict all buildings down there. But I don't think we necessarily want to restrict which wall it's on on all of those other buildings. For example, the hotel-zoned buildings that are inland, right? They're not along the road. I guess it's just... I feel like if I'm having a little issue making sure what this really means and how it's going to be applied to everyone, then I don't have any suggested language. I'm sorry. I thought we were going with another language during the break, so I would just suggest that it's vague. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you very much, Senator Terlahey. Senator Will Castro, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I'd like to direct my question maybe to you or the proffer of the amendment. Madam Speaker, I was able to listen in on the concerns about the effect that artificial light would have on an ecosystem. I was able to hear a previous speaker allude to the effects that artificial light could have even on spawning of certain types of species. And now I'm seeing an amendment here, which I support in its intent. But I'm just concerned, Madam Speaker, that it'll be very hard to enforce this. And just to be completely pragmatic about it, perhaps, and I would be happy to lend myself to participate in the crafting of additional legislation, perhaps we might want to consult with the Bureau of Statistics and Plans, maybe NOAA, maybe the University of Guam's Marine Lab. Because I'm not sure to what degree you can determine a certain type of light had radiated onto the ocean and/or the beach. You know, first of all, I'm not a scientist, but I would imagine you need a photometer. And then I don't know if you're going to be able to discern if that light came from one establishment or refracted off another building from another establishment. And so I guess my point, Madam Speaker, is I'm rising in objection to the amendment, but I would like to recommend that we come back as a body or as colleagues in a bipartisan fashion to come up with a separate piece to address this environmental concern. Thank you.
Sidois Masi, Senator Castro, there has been an objection to the amendment. Does anyone else wish to speak on the amendment? Seeing that there was an objection, I will call for a vote on the amendment. All those in... Oh, I'm sorry. Senator Kelly Marsh Titino, would you like to close on the amendment?
Okay, and I just wanted to clarify, is the objection to the amendment or the amendment to the amendment?
The objection is to the amendment to the amendment. And he also wishes to object to the original amendment. Senator Kelly Marsh Titino, would you... Do you wish to close?
So what I would say here in the closing, I think we are working collaboratively. There have been quite a number of us that have been working on this. And we have tried to make sure that these are buildings that are facing the road. And it does use the term "along." So this doesn't limit it to those buildings that are specifically on the road, as it was, as it were. But "along the road" is a more flexible, to my understanding, interpretation that buildings that are along, even if they're a building back or so, but along the road, would all be ensuring that their digital signage would be facing in the direction of the road. And then the additional assurance that the sign shall not illuminate or shed light onto the beach or ocean, I believe that's pretty discernible. A lot of lights actually, they create visibility, but they don't necessarily shed or project. And so in those ways, it should be pretty discernible as to what type of a light it is, whether it actually just is visible or sheds or illuminates or projects light. And to the suggestion that we work on separate legislation, that could be viable. But to not have anything while something goes on in the future and leaving everything vulnerable, I think would not serve the purposes. I think to get at it as best as we can now assures as much protection as possible. And then there can be time to work on strength needed, if needed.
Sidois Masi, Senator Kelly Marsh Titino, seeing that there was an objection to the amendment to the amendment, I will call for the vote. All those in favor of the amendment to the amendment, reading "Such sign shall not illuminate or shed light onto the beach or ocean," please raise your hand. The amendment passes. And now we are still on the original amendment. The amendment as amended now. Does anyone else wish to speak on the amendment? No one wishing to speak on the amendment? Speaker Tina Munya Barnes, would you like to close? Are there any objections to the amendment as amended? There are no objections. Seeing that there are no objections, amendment as amended passes. Speaker Tina Munya Barnes, you are still recognized.
Sidois Masi, Madam Speaker. I want to say that I'm hoping that I can hear the rest of the support from my colleagues. I may have one more amendment, but I'll do it at closing, Madam Speaker, as it relates to possibly... The possible grandfathering in of what is already existing today. But I also want to add for the record that on June 14, 2019, the Guam Visitors Bureau had sent in a testimony and support off, and I want to make sure that that gets appended to the journal. Also, on November 12, 2019, Vantage Advertising sent in a letter of support. And I wanted to know if I could motion to put both to be appended into the journal.
Sidois Masi, Madam Speaker, on the motion to add testimony from the Guam Visitors Bureau and Vantage Advertising to be appended to the committee report for Bill 86-35, are there any objections?
No objections.
To place on record. No objections, motion passes. On the motion to place Bill 86-35 into the third reading file, does anyone else wish to discuss? Senator Kelly Marsh Titino, you are recognized.
Sainama Asim, Madam Speaker. And so as I mentioned before, I have a statement, a point of inquiry, and several amendments. So for the statement, certainly, I support businesses. And absolutely, I like keeping up with technology. In fact, I helped create the first coloring app of Imanauta Motna or Chamorro ancestors and their way of life. So with that, I also want to add that we need to be responsible and thoughtful as we move forward with data and analysis that can strengthen our position, and it informs us so that we are not with good intentions unintentionally negatively impacting what we are trying to improve. In this bill, we are potentially talking about a dramatic change to the entire character of our tourist main district. So therefore, I am hesitant. There is no data that I'm aware of. There is no survey. There is no comparative analysis that can inform us and say that this is what visitors want. This will draw them. This will appeal to them. But also, the model signage does say, and this is what helped me temper some of my thoughts, that regulation often works better and more effectively than outright bans. So I'm attempting to come up with a balance that addresses some of the business community's concerns, but at the same time, does not destroy what we're actually... What is actually a working model and bringing people in literally by the millions. In four states, they have banned billboards and other types of signage. In Hawaii, they did this in the 1920s, and they have kept that ban all the way until now. In Vermont, they did this in 1968. In Maine, they banned billboards in 1980s. In Alaska, it was very recently, in the 1990s. Other states like Oregon are not allowing new signage, or these states are placing caps on the number of signs that they allow. They do so specifically because they're protecting a brand. These states, they're known for their beauty, their open skies, their charm, their countryside as a place that people can escape from the city. We are a tropical island. We are an island resort. People come here for rest, relaxation, sun and sand, experiences with nature, and experiences with tropical islanders and their culture. And that is largely our brand. So any step forward, I think, needs to take all of that into consideration. If entire states are doing it, and they've done this for almost like Hawaii, 100 years. And I've spoken to senators from Hawaii, and they're still sticking by this. They outnumber us by far for visitors, for people who go to tropical islands specifically to experience a tropical island. And yet, they have not added digital signage to Waikiki. They have not taken off that ban for billboards and such. So this kind of signage, or too much of it, may be working directly against our brand. And it may turn visitors off from choosing us because, let's face it, we're out there competing against every tropical island around us. Siamai, Rota specifically, Tinian specifically, Saipan specifically, Palau, Chuk, the Marshall Islands, Punta, Hawaii. We're competing against all of them. Without surveys, we don't truly know what our visitors' thoughts are and how they would respond. In all of the U.S., we have one Times Square, and that's perhaps for a reason. The United States has 2.3 billion acres of land, and yet we have one Times Square. We don't have a Times Square in every state or on every corner or in every visitor destination. We have Las Vegas and Las Vegas Strip. But again, it's extremely limited in 2.3 billion acres of land. We have 212 to 214 acres of land. So again, this leads me to be very cautious. Guam really needs to decide then because this is essentially an unchangeable path, whether it's going to continue to be known for its island charm as an escape from the bright lights of the city or whether it's going to be a main tourist spot that continues on as a tropical island with the sea, the sun, the sand, cultural experiences, and the like. Are we going to go in the direction of being a tourist spot that has a Times Square to a degree on it? So the question that I would have before I start proffering my amendments to the author of the bill so that I can have some comparative analysis, if I could hear what the competing tourist destinations are that are referred to in the bill and in GBB's letters specifically.
Thank you, Senator Kelly Marsh Titino. Speaker Tina Munya Barnes, do you yield to the question?
Sidois Masi, Madam Speaker. I'm going to try and yield, and I hope that I could answer her concern as it relates to that. Sorry, thank you. When we talk about competing destinations, I just want to share that the letter of support from GBB noted that... And if I can just read the third paragraph of their letter, they said, "A customized sign code for H Resort Zone was never adopted along with the Tumon Bay Master Plan that was done in 1981." Instead, the sign code for Guam's commercial zone has been applied to the... Has been applied to the H Resort Zone. "A particular shortcoming of the commercial zone's sign code is the prohibition of signs which are moving or flashing." "Modern signage regulations at other competing tourist destinations allow for digital moving signage that advertise products and services offered within the premise on which signage is affixed." "Bill 86-35 will ensure standards by better aligning enhanced signage regulations with our tourism industry goals." And to the previous speaker and in continuing to work with her, we did find some places where these were reliable. She talked about Times Square. We... Waikiki, Manila. In Asia, we... Haruku, Japan. Shinjuku, Shibuya. Bali, Indonesia, Jakarta. Boracay and Kailun. And that's, you know, as we are America in Asia and Asia in America, we continue to look at what we can work with to bring our visitors here. And advertising is one of the main keys. And I'm hoping that just by mentioning these places and knowing that the Guam Visitors Bureau's executive director, who's been in the industry for more than four decades, I'd like to say, truly says that this is a part of the effort. So I hope that answers some. That's the best I can give right now, Speaker.
Sidois Masi, Madam Speaker. Senator Kelly Marsh Titino, does that satisfy your inquiry?
Well, it's always useful to hear more information. But as I mentioned, I had spoken specifically to a senator of Hawaii who's been a senator for 20 years. And just a few weeks ago, he had assured me that Hawaii does not have this. So not having been to Hawaii recently, I'm not sure if we're speaking the same language when we're saying digital signage, if it's illuminated signs. Same for Bali. I'm not sure if it's illuminated signs versus digital signs. So for me personally anyways, I would just want to do further research to make sure that we're speaking the same language because from place to place, they define signage differently. But certainly, I think it still speaks to what I was saying about, you know, it's an image that we have to come to some sort of conclusion together as a legislature and say, what is it that we want for Guam moving forward, especially without any surveys or data or study of a written comparative analysis. I did have another question. I'm trying to... I was just about to write it when I was called up. Trying to remember what it was. But if I can, maybe if I can move into my amendments, and then if the question comes back to me, if I can ask it, my point of inquiry later.
Thank you, Senator Kelly Marsh Titino. You may proceed.
Sainama Asim, Madam Speaker. So the first one, and as the priest be is...
I'm sorry, Senator Kelly Marsh Titino. Before you go forward with the amendments, have they been disseminated?
Let me double check. I know I had them zirox.
Okay, we will take a brief recess.
We did find some places where these were reliable, she talked about Times Square. We Waikiki, Manila. In Asia, Haruku, Japan. Shinjuku, Shibuya, Bali, Indonesia, Jakarta. Borukai and Kaloon and that's. You know, as we are America in Asia and Asia in America. We continue to look at what. We can work with to bring our visitors here and advertising is one of the main keys and. I'm hoping that just by mentioning these places and knowing that the Guam Visitors Bureau. Executive Director who's been in the industry for more than four decades. I'd like to say truly says that this is a part of the effort so. I hope that answers some. That's the best I can give right now, Speaker.
Madam Speaker, Senator Kelly Marsh Titino, does that satisfy your inquiry?
Well, it's always useful to hear more information, but as I mentioned, I had spoken specifically to a Senator of Hawaii. Who's been a Senator for 20 years. And just a few weeks ago, he had assured me that Hawaii does not have this so. Not having been to Hawaii recently. I'm not sure if we're speaking the same language when we're saying digital signage. If it's illuminated signs, same for Bali, I'm not sure if it's illuminated signs versus digital signs. So for me personally anyways, I would just want to do further research to make sure that we're speaking the same language because. From place to place, they define signage differently. But certainly, I think it still speaks to what I was saying about, you know, it's an image. That we have to come to some sort of conclusion. Together as a legislature and say, what is it that we want for Guam? Moving forward, especially without any surveys or data or study of a written comparative analysis. I did have another question, I'm trying to, I was just about to write it. When I was called up. Trying to remember what it was, but. If I can, maybe if I can move into my amendments and then if the question comes back to me, if I can ask it, my point of inquiry later.
Thank you Senator Kelly Marsh Titino, you may proceed.
Madam Speaker, so the first one. And as the priest be.
I'm sorry Senator Kelly Marsh Titino, before you go forward with the amendments, have they been disseminated?
Let me double check, I know I had them zirox.
Okay, we will take a brief recess.
Elahesla Torin-Guahan is back from recess. We are still discussing Bill Number 86-35COR. And before the recess, Senator Kelly Marsh Titino had the floor. You are recognized.
Sen. Maussi, Madam Speaker. So in that time, I was able to recollect the question that I wanted to ask. It mentions H Resort Zones. And so if I could have some clarification as to what areas on Guam we have as H Resort Zones? I know definitely we have one in Tumon. But if the author of the bill could just enlighten me as to where else we do have H Resort Zones?
Thank you for the question, Speaker. Tina Rose Munya Barnes, do you yield to the question?
Madam Speaker, I will try again to answer and yield to the good Senator of Assent. I know all of Tumon. If I'm not mistaken, I'm not sure if Ladera was given that designation, and maybe Hotel Axion. I know that there's nothing in the south. I know that there were applications done for Aget, and that was not approved. I know that they were, applications were done for Pago Bay Resorts, and that was not provided either. So I can double-check, but that's through recollection.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I believe Senator Terlahi may have an answer. Senator Terlahi, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I did inquire with the Department of Land Management as to hotel zones, because the original bill was going to allow digital signs throughout hotel zones on Guam. The bill's been amended since to only allow digital signs in Tumon Bay. But the hotel zones included Aruna, Dos Amantes, up there at Two Lover's Point. And they gave me the maps. And in, there's actually a hotel zone in Yamatic. And this one is the Tumon Bay. So that's...
Thank you very much, Senator Terlahi. Senator Marsh Titino, does that satisfy your inquiry?
Hungan, because as the former speaker mentioned, the bill has changed from H Resort Zones to H Resort Zone in Tumon. And I wanted to make sure that we were considering parity, if parity needed to be considered, that we were not favoring one H Resort Zone over the other. So that is helpful to know, and it will be something that I take into consideration as this bill is now only talking about Tumon. With the amendments that I have, if I may begin those?
Yes, please proceed, Senator Marsh Titino.
The first one is just a technical correction, really, to add some clarity. It is on line 24, page 7. And it is to amend the bill to read, what it is really doing is just adding on two words at the end of the sentence so that we know it's 90 days from what, which was left hanging. To amend the bill to read, five. "Digital signs shall be properly maintained. The building official of the Department of Public Works shall issue a notice of violation to the permittee for any sign that is damaged or non-functional. The permittee shall make necessary repairs within 90 days, and then the addition of notice." So that it's very clear, we know exactly when that 90-day period begins and ends.
Thank you very much, Senator Marsh Titino. Is there anyone wishing to discuss the amendment? Senator Talat Tidigui, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I have a question to the author, if she so shall yield. It's okay? Yes, please. Okay, so my question is, why 90 days? You know, that's three months. And is there anything, any logic between why it would be 90 days instead of something a little bit shorter? Because, you know, that's out there for three months. Versus it could be just 30 day, 30 or 60 days even.
Thank you for the question. Does anyone wish to yield to the question?
I believe, since that's not germane to my two day, two words of notice, that might be more appropriate for the author of the bill, so I can yield to her if she would like to provide that understanding.
Thank you very much. I will recognize Speaker Tina Rose Munya Barnes to yield to Senator Tidigui's question of why the amount of time is 90 days.
Just to give more than reasonable time, Madam Speaker. And that was the logic.
Thank you very much, Senator Tidigui. Does that satisfy your inquiry?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I guess at that time, you know, I'd like to make an amendment, but it's actually not, I don't think it's here. I'll seek legal's advice on how I can make an amendment to that particular time. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to speak on the Marsh Titino amendment? Senator Therese Terlahi, you are recognized.
All right, okay. I understand the intent of this amendment, Madam Speaker. I just, 90 days of notice is a little bit different than the original language. This requires now DPW to get out there, give the notice. And if they give the notice after 30 days, then that sign has been sitting up there in Tumon, damaged or non-functional for more than 90 days, in fact. And I think the intent of this part of the bill was to, you know, we know this is our hotel district. It's our visitor's, you know, place. And that we wanted to maybe have higher standards to keep it, those signs maintained, and not adding, you know, not detracting from the millions of dollars that we're putting into that area on Guam to make it look beautiful for, to attract tourists. It was Maussi, Madam Speaker.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to speak on the amendment? There being no one else wished, wishing to speak? Hearing no objections? We have an objection? There is an objection to the amendment. Is there anyone wishing to speak? Now, Senator Marsh Titino, would you like to close on your amendment?
Sen. Maussi, Madam Speaker. So with my amendment, it's only adding in two words of notice. I certainly see that there could be discussion on whether it's 90 days or other days. So perhaps we could vote on the clarity of the two words of notice, and then in another amendment, perhaps tackle the issue of the 90 days.
I remove my, I remove my objection, Madam Speaker. I read it wrong.
Thank you very much.
So, yeah, I think the two words of notice can stand, and then we can vote.
Thank you very much. The objection has been withdrawn. Anyone else on the amendment? No, hearing no objections, the motion, the amendment passes. Senator Kelly Marsh Titino, you are recognized.
Sen. Maussi, Madam Speaker. So the next amendment that I have, it's related, there are, is similar language in two places. I'll begin with the first one, on line 13, page 2. "To amend the bill to read, one. Signs shall be placed along the building wall or behind a window or clear covering on the building wall. Shall not be higher than the roofline of the building, and shall protrude no farther than," I believe that was corrected already, "than 18 inches from the wall to which they are attached." So my thinking there was, for uniformity with other signage laws that we have, and for uniformity along Tumon Road, San Vitor's Road, and Gun Beach Road, to have them be placed along the building wall. And the reason that I chose the word "along" instead of "flat" is some buildings do have curvatures or angles to them. And so it allows them to still work with the requirement of 18 inches, not protruding out any farther than that, but giving them a little bit of flexibility or leeway, depending upon the particular shape of their building. And I placed "shall" in here. So again, there's that uniformity with other signage law, and uniformity one to the other. Additionally, many, many of the properties, many of the buildings along San Vitor's Road and Gun Beach Road, they're very, very close to the road. So anything farther than that has the potential to reach out into public areas or areas where there might be pedestrian or other safety issues involved.
All right, thank you very much. Anyone wishing to speak on the amendment? Senator Therese Terlahi, you are recognized. Anyone else wishing to speak on the amendment? Hearing no objections, the amendment passes. Senator Kelly Marsh Titino, you are still recognized.
Sen. Maussi, Madam Speaker. So the next one just continues so that there's uniformity within the bill itself, so that the other place that it mentions such requirements, that it has the same requirements. So line 25 on page 7. "To amend the bill to read, six. Digital signs, and that should be shall, be placed along on the building wall or behind a window or clear covering on the building wall. Shall not be higher than the roofline of the building, and shall protrude nor farther than 18 inches from the wall to which they are attached." For the same reasoning.
Sijjus Maussi, Senator Marsh Titino. Anyone wishing to speak on the amendment? Senator Tidigui, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Just to clarify, we're on the amendment that is titled line 25, page 7. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct. And when the author of the amendment read it out, she did make a correction that in the first line, may, will be read as "shall." So "digital signs shall be placed along on the building wall."
Okay, thank you, Madam. I just wanted to make sure.
You're welcome. Anyone else wishing to speak on the amendment? Hearing no objections, the amendment passes. Senator Kelly Marsh Titino, you are still recognized.
Sen. Maussi, Madam Speaker. Next, I have an amendment on line 15, page 4. "To amend the bill to read, three. Digital sign, crossing out includes, placing in means, an on-premise, crossing out animated sign, changeable sign, illuminated sign, or electronic message center sign located in the H Resort Zone. Digital signs are not animated signs." When I was reading through the model law, there were a couple of things that were clear. One is that the model law itself, when it defines animated signs, it says that animated signs are differentiated, meaning they are not the same thing as electronic message centers signs. And that electronic message center signs are the same thing as digital signs. So it focused on taking out the animated signs, because it goes against the model signage law. And in the legislative intent of this bill, it says that what is put forth in this bill is to be of the same accord as the model signage law. So it, it corrects it so that it follows the model signage law. And then further in the model signage law, it actually prohibits certain animated signs. And so again, both of these instances of saying it's differentiated, meaning it is not the same thing, and then it later on prohibits it, brings this bill more into line with what it says in the legislative intent, that it is to be of the same accord with the model signage law.
Thank you very much, Senator Marsh Titino. Anyone wishing to speak on the amendment? Senator Tidigui, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. You know, Madam Speaker, I'm looking up the definition for animated signs. And I come across those that are, well, kind of like a banner or still. But yet, it talks about neon signs that I think an animated sign, if I'm not mistaken, can have some type of illumination. And I just wanted to get the clear definition for animated signs. And with the good author, if she can yield to that question and kind of explain some samples and examples of it. Does any animated signs whatsoever have any kind of neon lights or any kind of lighting?
Thank you, Senator Tidigui, Speaker. Tina Rose Munya Barnes, do you, or I'm sorry, Senator Marsh Titino, do you yield to the question?
Yes, Hungan. So within the bill itself, the bill itself provides verbatim the definition of animated signs that is in the model law. So it has here on page 2, in definitions, it's the very first definition. It says animated signs. And then it goes on for quite a while. So it says as differentiated from. If any type of animated sign has some illumination, I don't think that that conflicts with a digital, us talking about digital signs. It, it means it may have some characteristics that it would have in common, but I don't believe it creates any conflict. Because in the model signage, they said that, they set out the definitions of both, and they said that one is differentiated from the other. So one is not the same as the other. And in this amendment, when it says, when it says digital signs are not animated signs, it's not specifically prohibiting anything that might be allowable right now, currently as an animated sign. It just says that it is not part of the definition of a digital sign. So it does not go any farther than that to ban it. It just says it's not recognized as digital.
Thank you, Senator Marsh Titino. Senator Tidigui, does that satisfy your inquiry?
Yes, it does, Madam Speaker. And I just wanted to read into the record what animated signs is. It means a sign employed actual motion, the illusion of motion or light and color changes achieved through mechanical, electronic, electronic means, animated signs, which are, and then it goes on further, but it, you know, there's a fine line between the two. So I just wanted to make it clear that, you know, when we go forward with these amendments, that we should be able to treat the animated signs similar to digital signs as we move forward. Because most, most things are now, most things now are put into digital format. You know, it has a different kind of illumination or a different kind of structural or mechanics to it. But just as we move forward, we should be cautious. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Senator Tidigui. Senator Castro, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I just rise in opposition to the amendment. My simple understanding is that the animated sign, as the retired Speaker mentioned, is something that can even give the appearance of motion. And so we adopted this amendment. It would restrict digital signage to, to what in my mind could be just a static imagery of a digital sign. And I don't think that's what the intent is with the bill. So thank you.
Thank you very much. There's been an objection to the motion. Senator, Speaker Tina Rose Munya Barnes, you are recognized.
Sijjus Maussi, Madam Speaker. As I continue to look at this and conferring with legal counsel, Madam Speaker, I want to say that based on that definition that was proffered by the two previous speakers, there also is a definition based on the model on-premise sign code of environmentally activated animated signs or devices motivated by wind, thermal changes, or other natural environmental, includes. And you and us in this room can probably even relate to it. You know, the spinners? You know, it's the spinach, there's large ones that you, you can hold still, and the wind blows it, and it, it turns like a fan. And that's included in the definition of. So I was thinking, and let me finish saying that, pennant strings and/or other devices are displaced that respond naturally to occurring extensions of motivation. So I want to say that maybe in order to help make this amendment easier was, I know there was an objection. help make this amendment easier was, I know there was an objection, but to add keep the word animated sign in, changeable sign, illuminated sign, and put and slash or electronic messaging center because the animated sign is already listed in this part of the universal code. On-premise sign code, I mean.
Thank you very much, Speaker.
So, there's an amendment to that amendment to add and slash or.
I apologize, Madam Speaker, just a point of order. It's really challenging to hear what the speaker is saying when other conversations are happening, if we need to take a recess. I'm not sure what's going on, but it's just very distracting.
Thank you very much, Senator Biskoly. Senator, Speaker Tina Rose Munya Barnes, you are still recognized.
I did have that amendment.
Okay. So, we have an amendment to the amendment. One moment, please.
Your point of order, I think her amendment to the amendment is not really amending the amendment. It's amending another section of this section that we, that her original amendment doesn't touch. So, I think we should just treat them separately. That's my suggestion.
Okay.
Madam Speaker, in those efforts, then, based on working closely with counsel and my definition of that and having a combination of both, I'm going to object to this amendment then.
Okay. There has been an objection to the amendment. Anyone else wishing to speak on the amendment? Senator Perez, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I rise in support of this amendment. I think that animated signs is a different universe than digital signs, and they should be treated separately. And thinking about the safety of our people on the roads, this could pose as a distraction to drivers. And considering the road is not straight, there's curvature to that road, and just one quick look away from the road can result in accidents. So, I think it's wise, prudent. You know, if we're looking at creating standards to signage, I think it's wise to ease into the changes than to, you know, just have this animated sign in there. So, I rise in support of this amendment.
Thank you, Senator Perez. Anyone else wishing to speak on the amendment? Senator Marsh Titino's amendment. Senator Therese Terlahi, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I too rise in support of this amendment. And it would change the bill significantly because the bill currently allows animated signs. But animated signs, according to pages two and three and animated signs are defined very broadly. I mean, they're, they include environmentally activated animated signs motivated by wind, thermal changes, environmental input, that's the spinners, or mechanically activated signs characterized by repetitive motion, rotation activated by a mechanical system, electric motors or other mechanically induced means, or animated signs which produce the illusion of movement by means of electronic, electrical, or electromechanical input, or illumination capable of simulating movement through flashing, patterned illusionary movement. And in particular, the flashing, Madam Speaker, which is on page three, item I, under subsection C. Flashing is described as animated signs whose illumination is characterized by a repetitive cycle in which the period of illumination is either the same as or less than the period of non-illumination, a cyclical period between on and off. Ex on and off of exceeding four seconds shall not constitute flashing. So, less than four seconds, we're talking about quick changes, those are flashing, and those are included in the definition of animated signs. However, in another portion of the bill, and I think in the code, flashing signs, and I think even in the, if you look at old plans of GVB, flashing signs are prohibited. So, I'm trying to find the other section of this bill where they talk about flashing Here. Page seven, under subsection B four, it says it shall be unlawful to erect a flashing digital sign. But I think, I think the definition of animated is problematic. It's very broad and it so I support this amendment, Madam Speaker, so that we will in fact prohibit the flashing signs. Sijous Maasi.
Thank you very much, Senator Terlahi. Anyone else wishing to speak on the amendment? Senator Biskoly, you are recognized.
Sijous Maasi, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, if the proffer of the amendment would yield to a question?
Please state your question.
I'd just like to get an example, like a for example for the body to consider. So, in terms of an animated sign, would, let's say a video image of somebody moving or somebody waving, would that constitute an animated sign in the way that we're discussing it as proposed in this amendment?
Thank you for the question. Senator Marsh Titino, do you yield to the question?
My understanding is that digital signs are used in this model sign link, sign code in a synonymous way with message electronic centers. Message electronic centers are defined. And it says that they can have variable messages, they can have graphic presentation capabilities, they can be electronically programmed, and so forth. They have these various displays, they have dynamic frames. So, my understanding by all the definitions that they give is they absolutely can provide video, they can absolutely provide different sorts of graphics that can move around on the screen. For an example of some of these animated signs, and you know, things can have overlap, there can be shiny, lit, animated signs, I'm sure. But some of the examples that they give is that on page 15 of the model sign code, they give an example of a pinwheel that's moved in motion by the wind. So, I'm not writing anything in here that necessarily bans those. It's just saying that when we're talking about digital signage, we are not talking about such things as pinwheels that are moved about by the wind. We are not talking about pennant strings that might blow in the wind. So, again, it's not banning them. It's just clarifying that when we're talking digital, that digital is going to, as the sign code, the model on-premise sign code says, that we're talking specifically about the electronic message centers that do seem to, by looking at the definitions, offer things like video and movement on the screen.
Thank you very much, Senator Marsh Titino. Senator Biskoly, does that satisfy your inquiry? Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to speak on the amendment? Senator Castro, you are recognized. Do you have a point of inquiry? Okay. Senator Castro, you are recognized.
Thank you. Madam Speaker, I just want to draw a distinction here. I certainly can understand what the previous speaker was trying to communicate about pinwheels and mechanically activated devices through wind or some other means. I understand that, I get that, and I actually support that. And I think you can achieve that, Senator, if we simply struck, and I'm not proposing this yet, I'm just putting it out there for your consideration, Madam Speaker. If we looked at page three as an example and struck section A and section B on page three. I'm just concerned that if we go ahead and try to define it based on what I just heard, you're really creating two different classes of signage. I mean, if you just look down the street at the ITC intersection or at the other sign down here, also on Route one, if you look at it by the strict definition, those signs also employ certain types of electronics to give the appearance of motion. A previous speaker also asked if the proffer of the amendment could give an example. And so, again, back to my first objection relative to the amendment, to the amendment, I'm afraid that if we strike this and try too hard to draw that distinction, that you're really going to restrict the bill to electronic signage that's static. And I don't think that's the intent. That's just my understanding. However, again, and I'll close with this, Madam Speaker, and thank you for allowing me to address the body. I'm open and receptive to anyone who would want to motion. I could suggest that also to the previous speaker to remove section A and section B, that'll be line three and line eight, those sections of page three. But again, I don't want to see us move down a path where you're restricting the H, the Tumon Hotel Resort Zone area, to simply illuminated static signage, yet throughout the rest of the island where other signs are permitted, you have electronic or digital signage that does give the appearance of motion. Thank you, Madam Speaker, I appreciate that.
Thank you very much, Senator Castro. Anyone else wishing to speak on the amendment? There has been an objection to the amendment, and I will call for the vote. Would you like to close on the amendment, Senator Kelly Marsh Titino?
In looking at this, in this model on-premise sign code, this it makes certain connections. It says that the subject is electronic message center signs that are also referred to as digital signs. And then on page 15, when it talks about animated signs, it says that these animated signs, and then it breaks down into different categories of animated signs, are differentiated from changeable signs. Elsewhere, it says that these electronic message centers that they said are digital signs are changeable signs. And so, the animated signs are differentiated from changeable signs. I think you can definitely have instances where things have overlap, but it doesn't mean that one rules out the other necessarily. So, here in the electronic message center, you can have variable message, you can have graphic presentations, it can be electronically programmed, and so forth. What I would like is a minute, or not a minute, but if I could have a brief recess to see if we can make sure that we're addressing the issue in a way that makes sense for everybody going forward. Because I believe in this instance, we all want the same thing. We want to have video elements and elements of change. So, I just want to make sure that we're aligned.
The legislature is back in session. Senator Kelly Marsh Titino, you are still recognized.
Signe maasi for the brief recess, Madam Speaker. It allowed us to confer amongst each other and address our different concerns. As I mentioned, I think we were really on the same page as just trying to figure out how to get there. So, I would like to proffer amendment to my amendment so that the amendment would read three. Digital sign means an on-premise, electrically activated animated sign, changeable sign, illuminated sign, or electronic message center sign located in the H resort zone. Digital signs are not environmentally Digital signs are not environmentally or mechanically activated animated signs or
Thank you very much, Senator Marsh-Taitino. Can you please have the amendment disseminated? We will take a moment's recess to pass it out. The legislature is back from recess. Senator Marsh-Taitino, you are recognized to continue on your amendment.
Signum Assi, Madam Speaker. So everybody should have a copy of line 15, Page 4. And then, I've read the amendment previously. Did you want me to read it again for clarity?
Yes, please.
Magahit. To amend the bill to read three. Digital sign means an on-premise, electrically activated animated sign, changeable sign, illuminated sign, or electric message center sign located in the H Resort Zone. Digital signs are not environmentally or mechanically activated animated signs or devices.
Thank you very much. On the amendment, anyone wishing to speak? Senator Therese Terlahey, you are recognized.
All right. I guess to be consistent with the way this is structured, we're taking the definitions of, well, animated sign is defined as an environmentally or mechanically activated sign, and we're saying digital signs are not environmentally or mechanically activated animated signs. So I would add here, to mirror the prohibition later on in the bill, the word, I would make a motion to add the word flashing. So digital signs are not environmentally or mechanically activated animated signs or flashing signs, flashing animated signs.
So to add the word flashing before animated?
Yes. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you. There's been an amendment proposed to the amendment for the last line to read. Digital signs are not environmentally or mechanically activated flashing animated signs or devices. Anyone wishing to speak on the amendment to the amendment? Are there any objections to the amendment to the amendment? Senator Biskel Lee, you are recognized.
Signum Assi, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, if the proffer of the amendment to the amendment would yield to the question, so I just want to ensure that we're using the word flashing in the same way that it's been used in the bill, so less than three seconds, is that what we're discussing?
Will the proffer yield to the question?
Sorry. Thank you for the question. I'm not exactly sure, but I know that on Page 7, it says it shall be unlawful to erect a flashing digital sign. So the only place I can find the definition of that is under the definition of an animated sign. It says flashing shall be, and then it gives a time period, you know, gives a definition of the flashing. So I guess I'm hoping to, yes, I think we should to be very, well, anyways, yeah, I'm hoping to, to ensure that flashing signs are not allowed, flashing as defined on Page 3 under animated signs.
Thank you, Senator Terlahey. Senator Biskel Lee, does that satisfy your inquiry?
Yes. So Page 3, and then it's just C, I, and then flashing. So a cyclical period between on-off phases of illumination exceeding four seconds shall not constitute flashing, so three or less.
Yes, that's correct. Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to speak on the amendment to the amendment? Any objections? Hearing no objections, the amendment to the amendment passes. Anyone else wishing to speak on the original amendment? The amendment to the amendment as amended. Anyone else wishing to speak? Okay, and we had an objection from Senator Castro and an objection from the Speaker, Tina Rose Munia Barnes. Okay, and both have been withdrawn. Anyone else? Okay, they have moved to withdraw their motion, their objections? Any objection? Any objections? Okay, motion passes. We are still on the amendment to the amendment. Do you wish to close? Senator Kelly?
Ahi, I think we've discussed it enough, so I think it stands.
Okay, okay, on the main motion, the amendment as it was amended. Anyone else wishing to speak? Are there any objections? Senator Marsh Titino, would you like to close on the amendment? There being no objections, the amendment as amended passes. Senator Marsh Titino, you are still recognized.
Sina Maasi, Madam Speaker. This amendment addresses certain types of signs that emit things such as flames. So, again, reminding everyone how close the quarters are in Tumon. This is on line to be determined, page 9. To add a new 15 to the bill to read. 15. Sign emissions are prohibited. No sign which emits smoke, visible vapors, particles, sound, or odor shall be permitted. Open flames used to attract public attention to a place of business or to an advertising sign shall not be permitted. I think a lot of this fits within the realm of public safety. Again, this is in the model sign code. It was something that was stated is to be prohibited. Flames certainly, especially in the close quarters of Tumon, could be quite dangerous. Also, we've spoken recently about smoke and odor and how that can be, that can be something that either affects a person's health or their enjoyment of an area. And so, I hope the other senators see those types of logic, as I do, in the model code's recommendation to prohibit these types of signs.
Thank you very much, Senator Marsh Titino. Anyone wishing to speak on the amendment? Senator Rigel, you are recognized.
Thank you. If the proffer of the amendment would yield to a question, I do have a question.
Please state your question.
How would the section about the open flame affect, for example, tiki torches and things of that nature that are often used at the various cultural dance shows throughout Tumon?
Senator Marsh Titino, do you yield to the question?
Hungin, and I'm glad that it's asked because we want to provide this kind of clarity. It is certainly something that I've talked over with my colleagues. I know that a lot of restaurants do emit, well, smells from their kitchens to entice patrons in. We do have very active shows that may have tiki torches. But the defining characteristic here is these are from signs which would be placed differently and would potentially be unattended on buildings and so forth. So, the key word here is that we're talking about signs, not tiki torches or restaurants that have vents. But I'm glad for the question to be able to provide that clarity.
Thank you, Senator Marsh Titino. Senator Rigel, does that satisfy your inquiry?
So, is it just a flame that's in proximity to a sign? Is there a specific proximity that it has to be with relation to the sign?
Here, oops, let me make sure that I haven't moved it around. Here in the amendment, it specifically says that the sign which emits, so it would have to physically be the sign itself that would be physically emitting that flame or that smoke. Again, I hope that provides clarity.
Senator Rigel.
Yes, thank you, that answers my question, thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to speak on the amendment? Senator Therese Terlahey, you are recognized, and then followed by Senator Bisko Lee.
Thank you, Madam Speaker.
All right, the author has shown me that this, this, these words used to attract public attention are actually in this model code. But I find that to be very vague as to how we're going to enforce it. How, how am I going to prove that, that the owner of the building or the flame was trying to use it to attract public attention? So, I would just, if it's possible, make an amendment, move to make an amendment to this amendment by taking out that last sentence regarding flames so that we don't have an intent that's required, and we just put the word flame up here with smoke. So, no sign which emits smoke, and then add flame, comma, and then visible vapors, particles, sound, blah, blah, blah. And so, that way, we have no, there's no intent necessary, and it's definitely connected to the sign.
And to also strike out
The last sentence, correct.
The last sentence, open flames used to attract public attention to a place of business or to an advertising sign shall not be permitted.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone wishing to speak on the amendment to the amendment? Hearing no objection, motion passes. Senator Marsh, on the main amendment?
Sina Maasi, Madam Speaker. And I do think the previous speaker, I think that is a very good amendment to the amendment. I think it makes it stronger. I think it does take out the intent there, which can be arguable, and it makes it very, very clear. So, I appreciate all of the attention and detail that people are placing into this as we consider this bill.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to speak on the main amendment? Hearing no objections, the amendment pass, amendment as amended passes. Senator Marsh Titino, you are still recognized.
Sina Maasi, Madam Speaker. There, the next amendment I would like to address is line blank to be placed as determined appropriate by legal on page 9. To add a new, it says 16, but I will leave that up to legal to make the technical corrections as is necessary. To add a new section to the bill to read. Digital signs are prohibited from promoting obscene material as defined by 9 GCA Section 28.90. Again, this provides uniformity with elsewhere that we have set out definitions, and we said that certain things are not to be public, especially as our tourism industry and many of us, we spend a lot of time in the Tumon District or go there from time to time to celebrate family events and other events. And there are, is a lot of family orientedness amongst our visitors, amongst ourselves as we spend time down in Tumon. So, again, I ask for the support of our fellow senators in making sure that we are keeping our destination family friendly, that we are keeping our, our area of Tumon family friendly for ourselves. And, and I'll be happy to ask any questions should any arise.
Thank you very much, Senator Marsh Titino. Anyone wishing to speak on the amendment? Hearing no objections. Yes, to clarify, this will be on page 9 to add a new 16 to the bill. Yes, Senator Bisko Lee, you are recognized.
Sida Smasi, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I thank the proffer of this amendment for bringing this discussion to the floor. I just was taking a look at, at the last section of her amendment. It states, as defined by 9 GCA subsection 28.90. And so, I took the liberty of pulling up the code and just to ensure that I was aware of what exactly she was referring to. And it's actually kind of vague. So, when you're taking a look at subsection 28.90, there's this language in here that says, you know, "An average person applying contemporary adult community standards would find, depicts, or describes in a patently offensive way sexually explicit conduct consisting of," and then there's a bunch of things that it names, and I'll spare everybody all of those things. But it goes on to say, you know, "A reasonable person would find, taken as a whole." So, I just wanted to know if the proffer of the amendment would yield. Who would determine whether or not, I mean, because something could be offensive to me, and I feel like I'm the average person, but it could be totally not offensive to another member of the body. So, I just wanted to try to get an idea of who would determine this.
Thank you for the question. Senator Marsh Titino, do you yield to the question?
Sina Maasi, Madam Speaker, and yes, I do, Hungin, I yield to the question. And again, I'm, I'm glad for these questions. I think it's important that we have this clarity. I think it's important that we're discussing these things amongst ourselves as we're seeking our way forward. And my understanding is, I've been advised that these are legal definitions, and these would be determined, first of all, they've been in existence for quite some time in our law already. It's calling for this to be uniform with what has been in our law, and as far as I know, working within our law, that they have been successful is what I mean by working. And that this would be determined, if it should go that far, it would be determined by a judge.
Thank you very much, Senator Marsh Titino. Senator Bisko Lee, thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to speak on the amendment? Hearing no objections, amendment passes. Senator Marsh Titino, you are still recognized.
Sina Maasi. So, I just have two, hopefully, quick amendments left. One is line undetermined to be determined by legal on page 9. To amend the bill to read, C. Statutory interpretation. A sign shall be considered and deemed prohibited if it is not explicitly allowed in this section. As I was reading through the model sign code, this language verbatim was there. And it seemed to me to provide the clarity that we all seem to be seeking, that it makes it very clear and hopefully takes out some of the gray areas as to whether something might be allowable if it isn't mentioned. And this makes it very clear that we have outlined what is allowable. We've outlined some things that are definitely prohibited or not allowable. And that if they have not been addressed in this section, then they are explicitly not allowed.
Thank you very much, Senator Marsh Titino. Anyone else wishing to speak on this amendment? Any objections? Hearing no objections, amendment passes. Senator Marsh Titino, you are still recognized.
Sina Maasi, Madam Speaker, and I believe this is my last amendment. This one is, as I spoke in the beginning, I'm very hesitant about this signage overall. We've grown as an island. Tourism has blossomed on our island, and it's blossomed in certain ways. We are potentially looking at something that could dramatically alter our entire character and appeal. So, while I support businesses, I also want to make sure that we don't rush into anything too quickly that would actually hamper and negatively affect those very same businesses that depend very heavily on, on visitors. Especially without the lack of data, surveys, or anything informing us that this is absolutely what want, what our visitors want. So, I think our approach to be, since we haven't started with a pilot project, per se, that our approach to, should be to be cautious. Instead of rushing in and going ahead with 330 square feet of signage per property, that we take it one step at a time, that we take half of that and see how it goes. See how visitors respond. And if the response is positive, we can always build. But if we rush ahead, allow 330 square feet per property, it's much harder, as everyone in here knows, it's much harder to take it back, to tell everybody that the money they've invested, the thoughts that they've put into this are now something that have to be taken down. We can always build. We can always assess and determine it is indeed working. So, with this amendment, it's on line 25, page 8. To amend the bill to read. A digital sign shall not have a signed face exceeding 20% of the allowable signage area on the facade of the building as prescribed by law or by a variance from Guam Land Use Commission, except that in no case shall, shall digital signage area exceed 165 square feet on a single property. It strikes out two signs of, which would have allowed 330 square feet, and it says, let's start at half that. 165 square feet is still an ample amount of potential signage. And also, in the way that it was written with it being in two signs, instead of as determined by the property owner that may have to accommodate numerous tenants, it would seem to me to say if it's two signs, that it makes it less equitable for everybody to achieve the same outcomes and goals. That in order to maximize, they would have to be able to afford two 10-foot by 16-foot signs. And I would imagine, I haven't done any research on how expensive they are, but I would have to imagine that would be a pretty hefty investment. So, for equity and for proceeding with caution, I would be more comfortable with us starting with 165 square feet per property, not per building and not per tenant, but per property.
Thank you very much, Senator Marsh Titino. Is there anyone wishing to speak on the amendment? Senator Will Castro, you are recognized.
Perhaps the proffer of the amendment can yield to the following question. So, in the example of a building who has a height of 15 and a width of 20 feet, approximately 300 square feet, 20% of that, I would imagine, I'm thinking of this particular place at the intersection in Tumon as an example. It's that one small facility. I think it sells food now, it used to sell watches. I don't want to name the facility, I don't even know who owns it. But I guess my point would be, Senator, or Madam Speaker, if it's that small building, then they'd be relegated on the facade or the side facing the road to maybe a five-foot by five-foot sign. And I don't know if that's designed, if that's the intent. I just don't see the parity there, but perhaps the previous speaker can clarify.
Thank you very much, Senator Marsh Titino. Do you yield to the question?
Hungin, well, in a sense. Because that is not part of my amendment, per se, it's from the original bill, I would defer to the author of the bill. I see the point about parity, but then there is also the difference in size of the building to begin with, and then not understanding if that is one property or if that is actually one building on one property, but actually the property consists of several buildings. So, I, I'm not familiar with that particular situation in its entirety. But I would yield to the author of the bill since the 20% is from the original bill, if she, if she has interest in yielding.
Thank you, Senator Marsh Titino. Speaker Munya Barnes, do you yield?
Thank you. Madam Speaker, if I may, I'm just going to share the same sentiments from the good speaker of Baragata. sentiments from the good speaker of Baragada, and I do have concerns about not giving the opportunity for the owners of the building who would want to work on the signage there, so I was going to, I guess I'll share my concerns in a bit.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Senator Castro, thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to speak on the amendment? Speaker Tina Rosen, Munya Barnes?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. As I shared, having some concerns, I'm going to object to this, respectfully object to this amendment.
There's been an objection. Is there anyone else wishing to speak on the amendment? Senator Pito Trelahi, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. You know, I'm kind of confused because when you go to line 13 on page eight, right? A digital sign should not have a signed face exceeding 20% of the allowable sign, and it says right there. Now, following that, the variance from the Guam Land Use Commission, except that in no cases shall a digital signage area exceed two signs of 165 feet. So the previous speaker was saying adding the 165 times two is 300 feet, that's not, that's not the way this thing is being written. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to speak on the bill, I mean, on the amendment, excuse me? Senator Biskoly, you are recognized.
Dispense them, Madam Speaker. Could we have a quick 30-second recess?
Sure, we are now in recess. We have Senator Regina Biskoly, and then Senator Telo Taidegui. So Senator Biskoly, you are recognized.
Sujus Massey, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I thank the good sponsor of this bill and my colleagues for really taking the time to, the time and the care to help improve this measure, and I'm especially grateful that we've collectively placed provisions that make this legislation really reasonable for all of those involved. So we're thinking about developers, about our tourists, and especially our local residents and our small businesses, advertisers. So at this time, I want to include an amendment, and I believe it's been passed out. I'll just make one quick change to the placement of it, if that's okay. So, Madam Speaker, if all my colleagues have received, it would be an amendment to amend, it says section four of the bill, but I'd just like to place it in a different section, so it would be to amend section two of the bill, and it would be placed in subsection 61541, sub F3. So it'd be creating a new subsection three entitled violations. And, Madam Speaker, I'm moving this amendment forward because I think it's important that while we really detail and put in fine print all of the definitions and what we're allowing, it's important, in my mind, to know what's not allowed, and when these things are not allowed, what the consequences are for violating this new section. And so, again, this would be violations. Any person in violations of provisions, subsection 6154F 1 through 2 of chapter 61, title 21, Guam Code annotated, shall pay a civil penalty not to exceed $1,000 for each violation. Violation or violations that are not corrected within 10 business days of a receipt of a notice of violation from the Department of Public Works, said person shall be subject to an additional late action civil penalty not to exceed $300 per to an additional late action civil penalty not to exceed $300 per day for each remaining to an additional late action civil penalty not to exceed $300 per day for each remaining it and, and add additional language, that we put some teeth into it, and we make a violation. violation. statement about what happens when you violate these new rules. Failure to pay penalties and to rectify violations may result in the termination Failure to pay penalties and to rectify violations may result in the termination Because we've just, we've all seen the consequences of what can happen when any kind of sign, or non-renewal of sign permit. or non-renewal of sign permit. digital or otherwise, are, are not regulated. The Director of Public Works shall have the authority to waive parts or all of the late The Director of Public Works shall have the authority to waive parts or all of the late action penalties should the violator demonstrate a good faith effort to address the violation action penalties should the violator demonstrate a good faith effort to address the violation Madam Speaker, I will just refer to what has happened in the past. in a timely manner, provided that such waiver is limited to no more than 30 calendar days. in a timely manner, provided that such waiver is limited to no more than 30 calendar days. You know, previous administration really openly flaunted its willingness to approve All penalties recovered in any such action shall be paid into the general fund. All penalties recovered in any such action shall be paid into the general fund. construction of signs when we didn't have any legal authority to do so. And Madam Speaker, I'd just like to, oh, on the reverse side of this, there's also And Madam Speaker, I'd just like to, oh, on the reverse side of this, there's also And this body had to scramble to deal with electronic billboards that were installed a motion to authorize Legislative Legal Counsel to make technical corrections to this amendment. a motion to authorize Legislative Legal Counsel to make technical corrections to this amendment. before we had an opportunity to enact regulations. And Madam Speaker, I just want to let my colleagues know that this is currently in And Madam Speaker, I just want to let my colleagues know that this is currently in And that's why it's so important to be able to come to a consensus on this measure. law, this is the current violations section that DPW can impose on, on any other kind law, this is the current violations section that DPW can impose on any other kind of Because the way that it was handled before was really arbitrary, it was really, at times unfair, and it was against the law in certain cases. of violators of these, of any signs on Guam. violators of these, of any signs on Guam. And so this is just helping to ensure that this measure is consistent with the rest And so this is just helping to ensure that this measure is consistent with the rest So I think passing this bill can send a clear message to our people that we learned of our sign policy. of our sign policy. those harsh, harsh messages and lessons of the past, that we take our jobs as policymakers Sudus Massey. Sudus Massey.
Sudus Massey, Senator Lee. Sudus Massey, Senator Lee. Anyone wishing to speak on this amendment? Anyone wishing to speak on this amendment? Senator Taidegui, you are recognized. Senator Taidegui, you are recognized.
very seriously, and we won't let jungle rules be the new guide, be what guides new businesses
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
and guides our government. Sudus Massey, Madam Speaker.
Thank you very much, Senator Lee.
Madam Speaker, it was a few days after Bill 86 had a public hearing that I introduced Madam Speaker, it was a few days after Bill 86 had a public hearing that I introduced
Anyone else wishing to speak on the main motion? Okay, Senator Telo Taidegui, you are recognized.
legislation on May 23, 2019, that became Bill Number 141. legislation on May 23, 2019, that became Bill Number 141. Thank you, Madam Speaker. You know, Madam Speaker, although the Guam Administrative Rules and Regulations, also And in Bill 141, it basically does exactly what this amendment, almost exactly like And in Bill 141, it, it basically does exactly what this amendment, almost exactly like known as GAR, require signage in H Resort Hotel Zone properties to conform to the Guam's this. this.
Senator Taidegui, I ask that you stick to the bill at hand here? Senator Taidegui, I ask that you stick to the bill at hand here?
signage regulations, it is unclear which set the regulations, residential, agriculture, Right, this is an amendment to the bill, if I'm not mistaken. Right, this is an amendment to the bill, if I'm not mistaken. Right? Right? Is this, this is an amendment to the bill. Is this, this is an amendment to the bill. So I am speaking in regards to this amendment. So I am speaking in regards to this amendment. commercial, or industrial should apply to H Resort Zones. Hence the purpose behind the introduction of Bill 86. So... So... You know, I mentioned earlier, Madam Speaker, about introducing Bill 141 two days after the hearing on, on Bill 86, which proposes to establish penalties for violations involving any of the sign regulations outlined in Chapter 61, Title 21 Guam Code annotated.
Senator Taidegui, I'd just like to remind the body that according to our rules, Section Please make all your comments specific to the subject and try not to reference any Please make all your comments specific to the subject and try not to reference any 1.02 DB3, debate on non-reported bills is prohibited. additional bill outside of this bill today. additional bill outside of this bill today.
Madam Speaker, it, if I'm trying to make a point here and referencing something Madam Speaker, it, if I'm trying to make a point here and referencing something
It is out of order to refer in debate to a bill or other matter not yet reported by the committee, so please keep that in mind.
that was already introduced, and I think it's my prerogative to be able to speak on that was already introduced, and I think it's my prerogative to be able to speak on Is this on, on standing rules, Madam Speaker?
Our standing rules, yes.
it, and, and also to be able to speak on, on the parts that are similar to it, it, and, and also to be able to speak on, on the parts that are similar to it, Standing rules are Mason's rules. Just wanted to verify.
Yes, the clerks will provide you with a copy now.
Okay, well, Madam, Madam Speaker, I'm not debating my bill. and maybe incorporate additional amendments to the amendment. and maybe incorporate additional amendments to the amendment. I'm only referencing something, I'm not debating it.
To refer in debate to a bill?
But, for instance, in this violation C, Section C for violations, But, for instance, in this violation C, Section C for violations,
So we are now in debate of a bill? We are discussing a bill?
I'm discussing the bill. Bill 86, which is, I'm not debating it, I'm speaking on it, I'm providing history, which has been done in the past, Madam Speaker. I think it doesn't really, actually, I'll tell you what, it would simplify things, Madam I think it doesn't really, actually, I'll tell you what, it would simplify things, Madam This is the first I've seen, I mean, I've been in the 30th Guam Legislature, and we've referred to other bills that have been introduced. Speaker, for everyone, I think. Speaker, for everyone, I think. So I apologize if, if you feel I'm debating this, but I'm not debating it, I'm just referencing Legislation has been introduced similar to this. Legislation has been introduced similar to this. Actually, it goes even further, it even creates a special fund, Public Signage Enforcement Actually, it goes even further, it even creates a special fund, Public Signage Enforcement something to fact. This is fact. Special Fund, and I think it requires a public hearing, I believe it does. Special Fund, and I think it requires a public hearing, I believe it does. Bill 141 was introduced, that is fact. So for the sake of time, I will continue to move on and not mention this bill as I We need to bring all the people, the stakeholders at the forefront for this, so I object to We need to bring all the people, the stakeholders at the forefront for this, so I object to this amendment. this amendment.
There has been an objection. There has been an objection. Anyone else wishing to speak on the amendment? Anyone else wishing to speak on the amendment?
move forward, but I will definitely look into this.
Senator Therese Terlahi, you're recognized. Senator Therese Terlahi, you're recognized.
So Madam Speaker, it's unfortunate that Bill 86, as amended, as we move forward, that
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Thank you, Madam Speaker. I stand in support of this amendment. I stand in support of this amendment. It's, it's a very necessary part of this bill. It's, it's a very necessary part of this bill. If we, if we step back a moment and remember what we're really trying to do in this bill, If we, if we step back a moment and remember what we're really trying to do in this bill,
a lot of these concerns that I had, as far as violations are concerned, are not fully
we are changing policy that has been longstanding for, for years. we are changing policy that has been longstanding for, for years.
addressed, and I hope to do that in the future, to address those concerns.
It's, it's a policy that has, well, for years, we have not allowed electronic signs, first It's, it's a policy that has, well, for years, we have not allowed electronic signs, first
You know, echoing concerns that were raised also in an email from a member of the, the sign industry to all senators on October 1, 2019, concerning Bill 86.
of all, anywhere on Guam. of all, anywhere on Guam. And then in the last couple of years, there were efforts to allow electronic signs, and And then in the last couple of years, there were efforts to allow electronic signs, and those, those efforts were not successful because there was not consensus. those, those efforts were not successful because there was not consensus.
And it's about the teeth. We provided some teeth in here, but we need to also look forward to providing support,
This bill would allow electronic signs pretty much unlimited in Tumon, and it's a huge departure This bill would allow electronic signs pretty much unlimited in Tumon, and it's a huge departure
support for any bill.
in policy. in policy. So I think it's very important that if we are going to have such signs, that they be So I think it's very important that if we are going to have such signs, that they be
We can introduce, pass tons of bills, but without enforcement or support to, for enforcement,
maintained, that they, that they are, that they conform to the rules that, that are maintained, that they, that they are, that they conform to the rules that, that are being being laid out here with great painstaking, if I may say. laid out here with great painstaking, if I may say.
they mean nothing. In fact, it reminds me, when I was at the Guam Visitors Bureau, when I heard someone
And, and I think that's only right. And, and I think that's only right. It's a huge privilege that we are granting these businesses in this one area, or, you It's a huge privilege that we are granting these businesses in this one area, or, you
say, well, and it was a sign issue.
know, that the legislature would be granting them to put up signs in this one area of know, that the legislature would be granting them to put up signs in this one area of
When they laughed and said, oh, I don't have to worry about it, nobody enforces it.
Guam that are not allowed anywhere else, despite, you know, there being hotel zones Guam that are not allowed anywhere else, despite, you know, there being hotel zones
Nobody enforces it.
in other places. in other places.
So it's really important as we move forward to find some kind of support to enforce this,
But, so I think the least that we could do is to make sure that these rules that we But, so I think the least that we could do is to make sure that these rules that we
this piece of legislation.
are laying out are going to be enforced. are laying out are going to be enforced. And the rules are important for many reasons. And the rules are important for many reasons.
So that being said, Madam Speaker, I'd like to proffer amendment that has been passed
First of all, because a not working sign or a, or a sign that violates this, we, we First of all, because a not working sign or a, or a sign that violates this, we, we
out earlier to my colleagues, and was mentioned earlier through another amendment that passed
make these, or we're presumably making these rules because, for aesthetics, perhaps for make these, or we're presumably making these rules because, for aesthetics, perhaps for safety, perhaps for, you know, just to be consistent with how we are trying to attract safety, perhaps for, you know, just to be consistent with how we are trying to attract
to strike out, oh, let's go to line 24, page 7.
visitors to Guam. visitors to Guam. And I don't think it was the intention to create another, you know, digital city. And I don't think it was the intention to create another, you know, digital city.
To amend the bill to read, "Five, digital signs shall be properly maintained."
I'm sorry, Senator Telo, are you offering an amendment now?
It's really, it was really to allow businesses to advertise, if, you know. It's really, it was really to allow businesses to advertise, if, you know.
Yes, I am.
Okay, can, can we take a, thank you very much.
Okay.
But this, this amendment is, is what was also recommended at the public hearing by, But this, this amendment is, is what was also recommended at the public hearing by, by Trivision Company, Mr. Chris Marado. by Trivision Company, Mr. Chris Marado. And so he very specifically says that without a penalty like this, it's so easy to just And so he very specifically says that without a penalty like this, it's so easy to just operate and pay the fines. operate and pay the fines. And he thinks that that's what businesses might do without this type of penalty. And he thinks that that's what businesses might do without this type of penalty. So I think we, we should be able to enforce it. So I think we, we should be able to enforce it. I think it's very clear that despite the Department of Public Works's efforts, they I think it's very clear that despite the Department of Public Works's efforts, they are not able to enforce the sign laws that are in place right now. are not able to enforce the sign laws that are in place right now. That's one of my issues with this bill. That's one of my issues with this bill. We have, we have a huge problem enforcing sign laws right now, especially in Tumon, We have, we have a huge problem enforcing sign laws right now, especially in Tumon, I would say. I would say. And that if we are going to be able to get a handle on that, then we're, we're going And that if we are going to be able to get a handle on that, then we're, we're going to have to give the Department of Public Works some, some tools to use to do that. to have to give the Department of Public Works some, some tools to use to do that. It allows, I think, a reasonable exemption for those that are working in good faith, It allows, I think, a reasonable exemption for those that are working in good faith, and it allows the Director of Public Worth, this Public Works, this, this ability to and it allows the Director of Public Worth, this Public Works, this, this ability to use his discretion, and hopefully it's not abused. use his discretion, and hopefully it's not abused. But so, but I think that the penalty has to be stiff if we are to, if we are to preserve But so, but I think that the penalty has to be stiff if we are to, if we are to preserve the millions of dollars, again, that we are putting into beautifying Tumon. the millions of dollars, again, that we are putting into beautifying Tumon. It's, I just find it ironic, we're putting in millions of dollars for street lights, It's, I just find it ironic, we're putting in millions of dollars for street lights, for beautiful street lights, if, if I may say, not just, you know, any kind of street for beautiful street lights, if, if I may say, not just, you know, any kind of street lights, but the most beautiful street lights, landscaping, you know, we want everything lights, but the most beautiful street lights, landscaping, you know, we want everything to be beautiful, beach maintenance, safety. to be beautiful, beach maintenance, safety. And so I think that our efforts should be consistent, and, and that the penalty is, And so I think that our efforts should be consistent, and, and that the penalty is, it's, it's very reasonable in light of what these businesses are going to be able to do it's, it's very reasonable in light of what these businesses are going to be able to do moving forward. moving forward. Thank you, Madam Speaker. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you very much, Senator Terlahi. Thank you very much, Senator Terlahi. Anyone else wishing to speak on the amendment? Anyone else wishing to speak on the amendment? There has been an objection to the amendment, so we will take a vote. There has been an objection to the amendment, so we will take a vote. You'd like to close on your amendment, Senator Taidegui? You'd like to close on your amendment, Senator Taidegui?
Madam Speaker, can I have just a couple more minutes? Madam Speaker, can I have just a couple more minutes? I'm talking to the author of the amendment, please. I'm talking to the author of the amendment, please.
We'll take a brief recess. We'll take a brief recess.
The legislature is back from recess. Senator Titegui, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and thank you for the opportunity to have a conversation with the author of this amendment. And after discussion, you know, it only talks about digital signs. However, being able to incorporate any additional amendment to this one based on a bill that's already been introduced would require a public hearing. So, that being said, I think we're going to move forward with the bill that was previously introduced. And I will withdraw my objections for the sake of, you know, incorporating these violations, to have any kind of penalties in the event, you know, once this passes into law, if it should pass into law, to start at least monitoring and having the ability to place violations or fines on those who are breaking the law. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to discuss the amendment? Senator Castro, you're recognized.
I just want to rise in support of the amendment, Madam Speaker, and do commend my colleagues for the workout. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any objections to the amendment? Hearing no objections, the amendment passes. Senator Biskoly, you are still recognized.
Soodus Masih, Madam Speaker, and I thank my colleagues for their support of the amendment. I think I'm just really grateful that we've placed provisions in this bill that make it reasonable for all involved, including the amendment that just passed to add non-compliance penalties for bad actors who don't follow these new rules. And it's important that when we do make legislation, we take the time to carefully craft it and add additional language, that we put some teeth into it and we make a statement about what happens when you violate these new rules. Because we've just, we've all seen the consequences of what can happen when any kind of sign, digital or otherwise, are not regulated. Madam Speaker, I will just refer to what has happened in the past. You know, previous administration really openly flaunted its willingness to approve construction of signs when we didn't have any legal authority to do so. And this body had to scramble to deal with electronic billboards that were installed before we had an opportunity to enact regulations. And that's why it's so important to be able to come to a consensus on this measure. Because the way that it was handled before was really arbitrary. It was really, at times unfair, and it was against the law in certain cases. So I think passing this bill can send a clear message to our people that we learned those harsh messages and lessons of the past, that we take our jobs as policymakers very seriously, and we won't let jungle rules be the new guide, be what guides new businesses and guides our government. Soodus Masih, Madam Speaker.
Thank you very much, Senator Lee. Anyone else wishing to speak on the main motion? Okay, Senator Telo Titegui, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. You know, Madam Speaker, although the Guam administrative rules and regulations, also known as GAR, require signage in H resort hotel zone properties to conform to the Guam's signage regulations, it is unclear which set the regulations, residential, agriculture, commercial, or industrial, should apply to H resort zones, hence the purpose behind the introduction of Bill 86. You know, I mentioned earlier, Madam Speaker, about introducing Bill 141 two days after the hearing on Bill 86, which proposes to establish penalties for violations involving any of the sign regulations outlined in Chapter 61, Title 21 Guam Code Annotated.
Senator Titegui, I'd just like to remind the body that according to our rules, Section 1.02 DB3, debate on non-reported bills is prohibited.
Is this on the standing rules?
It is out of order to refer in debate to a bill or other matter not yet reported by the committee, so please keep that in mind.
Is this on standing rules, Madam Speaker?
Our standing rules, yes.
Standing rules are Mason's rules. Just wanted to verify.
Yes, the clerks will provide you with a copy now.
Okay, well, Madam Speaker, I'm not debating my bill. I'm only referencing something. I'm not debating it.
To refer in debate to a bill? So we are now in debate of a bill? We are discussing a bill?
I'm discussing the bill. Bill 86, which is, I'm not debating it, I'm speaking on it, I'm providing history, which has been done in the past, Madam Speaker. This is the first I've seen. I mean, I've been in the 30th Guam Legislature, and we've referred to other bills that have been introduced. So I apologize if you feel I'm debating this, but I'm not debating it, I'm just referencing something to fact. This is fact. Bill 141 was introduced, that is fact. So, for the sake of time, I will continue to move on and not mention this bill as I move forward, but I will definitely look into this. So, Madam Speaker, it's unfortunate that Bill 86, as amended, as we move forward, that a lot of these concerns that I had, as far as violations are concerned, are not fully addressed, and I hope to do that in the future, to address those concerns. You know, echoing concerns that were raised also in an email from a member of the sign industry to all senators on October 1st, 2019, concerning Bill 86. And it's about the teeth. We provided some teeth in here, but we need to also look forward to providing support, support for any bill. We can introduce, pass tons of bills, but without enforcement or support for enforcement, they mean nothing. In fact, it reminds me, when I was at the Guam Visitors Bureau, when I heard someone say, "Well," and it was a sign issue, when they laughed and said, "Oh, I don't have to worry about it, nobody enforces it." Nobody enforces it. So it's really important, as we move forward, to find some kind of support to enforce this piece of legislation. So that being said, Madam Speaker, I'd like to proffer amendment that has been passed out earlier to my colleagues, and it was mentioned earlier through another amendment that passed. To strike out, oh, let's go to line 24, page 7. To amend the bill to read, "Five, digital signs shall be properly maintained."
I'm sorry, Senator Telo, are you offering an amendment now?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Can we take a, thank you very much.
Okay.
Okay. We good?
Okay. So, proffering an amendment, which will be on line 24, page 7, to read, "Five, digital signs shall be properly maintained. The building official of the Department of Public Works shall issue a notice of violation to the permittee for any sign that is damaged or non-functional. The permittee shall make necessary repairs within 60 days," and this is striking out 90 to 60 days of notice. And it was mentioned earlier, Madam Speaker, that by the time DPW goes down there to have the, you know, especially if we don't have any enforcement, you know, or we're short-staffed to do so, to go down to notify violation to any business violating any of these sign laws, if it should pass, they have 60 days. That's two months, two months. That's sufficient enough time for them to make these corrections or take down their So, Madam Speaker, I ask my colleagues to think about that timeframe. 60 days. How many tourists come to our island within 60 days? In 60 days? We have 1.5 million tourists coming to our island and walking the streets of Tumon. That's quite a bit of people looking at signs that are in violation, something that we're trying to do, cosmetically and clean up Tumon, and hopefully any other place on this island that has sign laws. So I think 60 days is enough time, 60 days, two months time period, to make these corrections. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you very much. On the amendment, anyone wishing to speak? Speaker Tina Munier-Barnes, you are recognized.
Soodus Masih, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I really didn't have a concern about this. When the 90 days was put there on the original bill, we were taking into consideration the timeline. Usually when parts are ordered for malfunctions of electronics and other devices, just to make an order from anywhere, usually takes six to eight weeks. So we felt that 90 days would suffice, considering sometimes it takes that long to get things here on Guam. So, though I would rather give the 90 days, I'll just share my concern regarding that.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on the amendment? Senator Teresa Laje, you are recognized.
Just want to say, I support the amendment. I think it's reasonable, and I especially think it's reasonable because we are trying to maintain the, again, the beauty of Tumon, the attractiveness of these signs, and if they're not going to be that, then, you know, and if we can't get them repaired in time, then maybe they will just have to be taken down temporarily. Soodus Masih.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to speak on the amendment? Are there any objections? We have an objection. Senator Titegui, would you like to close on the amendment?
Thank you, Madam Speaker, for the opportunity. And, you know, I asked my colleagues to support this. Anybody who's into business knows that you have to prepare. You know you're going to run out of food. If you have a restaurant, you know you're going to run out of food, so you make sure you have it on stock. You know that if anything should break, the refrigerator should break or anything like that, you know you have the parts on stock. But who are we supporting here? Are we supporting the businesses, or are we supporting our intent of this legislation? The teeth that was just recently amended onto this bill to add? We're talking about the cosmetics of our tourist area, the most populated area. I know that on Amazon, you can have something here in four days. Malfunctions? You know, the last previous speaker mentioned that it could be easily taken down while it's waiting for parts, if it should take longer. If not, then they should check out Amazon, because they're really quick. So, Madam Speaker, I ask my colleagues to think about this. This is just 60 days. It's not 30, it's not two weeks, it's not, it's enough efficient time, and there's no data indicating or any research that, you know, 90 days is a magic number. But 60 days? It's enough time to see a violation sticking out like a sore thumb in Tumon, to let, to be able to stand and, up and erect it for 60 days. That's long enough.
Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you very much. Senator Titegui, there has been an objection to the amendment, and I will call for the vote. All those in favor of the amendment, please raise your hand. Amendment fails. Senator Titegui, you are still recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I have nothing more further. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to speak on the bill, the main motion, Bill 86? Okay, we will come back to Senator Marsh Titino, Soodus Masih. We will have a one-minute recess. The legislature is back in session. Senator Marsh Titino, you are recognized.
Sino Masri, Madam Speaker. So if I can speak and provide some closing statements for my amendment. My amendment is for us to proceed with caution. We are being told to take this on blind faith. And there's not a single one of us that are here to operate on blind faith. If there was one shred of data, if there was one single survey, if there was one tourist, one visitor that had even ever been asked formally for us to listen to, but what we have here is zero, none, nada.
One moment. Senator Marsh Titino, I know before we went to recess, you were speaking about an amendment to your amendment, and so I just want to confirm that it was handed out? You were working with legal counsel on that? Before we get into the meat of your amendment, can you please refresh our memories?
Right, and thank you for reminding me where we are in our place. And after consulting with legal, we're leaving the amendment as it is. We feel that it has, myself as the author, I feel, in conferring with some of my colleagues, that it has enough clarity to stand as it is.
And which amendment was this? Can you read it out again, please?
Okay, so the amendment is 13. A digital sign shall not have a sign face exceeding 20% of the allowable signage area on the facade of a building as prescribed by law or by a variance from the Guam Land Use Commission. So all of that is in the bill, except that in no case shall digital signage area exceed. And this is my amendment. To take out two signs of and just cap it at 165 square feet on a single property. So what this does to remind everybody in this amendment, it doesn't limit it to just two signs, it leaves it up to the discretion of the property owner how they intend to use that 165 square feet. In fact, there was testimony provided by the person that had suggested the bill and said, "We don't want to unfairly dictate or limit the size of these signs." If somebody needs a sign for their restaurant establishment to be a menu at one foot by two feet, I'm paraphrasing here, of course, that they didn't want to limit that person. So keeping it at two signs is really creating an imbalanced situation where they have to be just two signs, no matter how big or small. And so if one establishment maximizes them out at two sets of 165 square feet, which means larger than 10 feet by 16 feet each, if somebody wants an electronic digital menu sign, they cannot compete. In fact, they cannot have it because they've either negated that for everybody in their property that may want something larger. So I find it problematic to limit it specifically to two in that sense, rather than letting the property owners themselves decide how they want to divvy up 165 square feet. The other part of my amendment says, "Let's not rush into 330 square feet without," as I mentioned before, "a single shred of data, a single visitor that was even asked if they want this, if they find this appealing, if they would still come here with this." So on this amendment, it cautions us to start slow. We can always build. We can come back in a month, we can come back in six months, we can come back in a year if 165 feet is successful, and build it to 330 feet. But if we're going to tell the general public that we're going to go out on a whim, we're going to go out on a hope and a dream, we're going to go out on blind faith, that this is what is going to be best for our visitor industry without a single shred of data, without a single survey, without a single visitor being asked if they even find this appealing, then I think, as leaders, we're doing our community a disservice. We're here, not on what we find personally okay, not on what we hope is going to be good, but we're here to be the reef for our island. We're here to be that vanguard. We're here to say, "We are going to listen to facts, we are going to listen to the best advice as to what is good for our community." We have heard none of it. There are a couple of letters of recommendation based on, again, no analysis, no data, no survey that was presented at all. And so any leader who stands on nothing and goes ahead and says, "Let's have 330 square feet of it per building," I find that extremely troubling. I'm willing to support the business community, but we cannot take it back if we rush too fast. At the very least, my one appeal is, "Let's start halfway." We can always, always build. If we do the 330 square feet per building and the tourists are turned off, we have no one else but ourselves to blame that we decided to do this without any data. And I do not want to take that chance with the business community. So I hope people will vote with their conscience and as good leaders who've been entrusted in getting beyond what they personally feel might be beneficial or what they personally feel might be attractive, and vote based on fact. We can always build more, we can always add more, but let's start with caution. Sino Masri.
Thank you very much, Senator Kelly Marsh Titino. There was an objection to the amendment, and so we will call for the vote. Yes, we will read back the amendment. Oh, I'm sorry. She closed on the amendment. And so to reiterate the amendment, it is on line 1 and 2, page 9, to amend the bill to read. 13. A digital sign shall not have a sign face exceeding 20% of the allowable signage area on the facade of the building as prescribed by law or by a variance from the Guam Land Use Commission, except that in no case shall digital signage area exceed. And then to strike out two signs of 165 square feet and to add on a single property. So now we will call for the vote. All those in favor of the amendment?
Madam Speaker, can we recess until tomorrow so we can get our members here? There's only about 10 of us out of 15 here right at this moment.
There has been an objection. We will take a one-minute recess.